Good afternoon, everyone. Today is the inaugural city council meeting in our new city council chambers. Many of you may be here for the very first time. I know at the study session, I was so excited to see more members of the public than the staff. Although I think with the recognition we're going to do for many of our staff members today, the reverse is probably true. But I think you'll all agree, this is a beautiful space and much more comfortable and welcoming. So, welcome all of you. Today is March 14th. It's 3 o'clock, and this is a city council voting meeting. Do we have any introductions or announcements, Mayor Protam?
We do have announcements, Mayor. The city's Public Works Department will begin striping streets on March 20th for approximately six weeks after recent severe winter weather conditions caused wear and fading. Cinder cleanup is still needed in many locations, so the exact striping of specific ways is not available yet. Plug works crews are sweeping streets of cinders, prioritizing primary streets first, followed by secondary and neighborhood streets. The Code Compliance Department is working with property owners to clear sidewalks of cinders, especially on main arterals and heavily used roads. Potholes are also being repaired and can be reported at www.preskystreets.com. To prepare for the upcoming wildland fire season, the city is offering a free brush/vegetation debris drop-off event for residential trash customers every Saturday in April at the City of Prescott transfer station. This event is meant to help residents create a defensible space and prepare their properties. The event is for residential customers only, and proof of City of Prescott residency is required. Residents are reminded not to bag the brush/vegetation debris, not to place trash in the debris, and to cover and contain all loads when transporting them. For more information, call the Solid Waste Division at (928) 777-1116, or visit preskitrecables.com. And finally, breaking news today, the EPA proposed a maximum containment level, MCL, for PFOA and PFAS of four parts per trillion, and will hold public meetings on March 16th, March 29th, and May 4th for comments. Prescott's Chino Valley wells tested below four parts per trillion, except for the airport well 5, which will require treatment. The EPA website provides a summary table of the proposed regulation. The informational webinar on the proposed PFOA and PFAS National Primary Drinking Water Regulation can be registered for by clicking, well, by a link that I don't have. Further updates will be provided by staff.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and we've been waiting for the EPA's release of these, what I consider very reasonable numbers. They protect the public, but at the same time, they're measurable and they're achievable with our water management and being able to really assure the public that our drinking water is safe to use. So, we still have that one airport well that we'll probably have to work on a plan for, but the remaining wells that are providing drinking water to our city are well within the, below the limits that the EPA has finally decided to share with us.
Well within the limits?
Well within the limits. Thank you for the pun. We'll now have an invocation by Pastor Rick Stoffen from the Pine Rock Camp. Is Pastor Rick here?
Maybe he's at the old city hall.
I don't see him.
Could be at the old city hall. Do we have any chaplains that would like to step in and say an invocation for us?
Councilman Tenney, perhaps you'd like to?
There's got to be someone.
Yeah, is that right?
Okay, thank you, Councilman Tenney. And then we'll have a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilmember Rusing.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful this afternoon to be able to meet here in this city hall. We're grateful for the circumstances that bring us together, thankful to be citizens of the United States and of Arizona and of Prescott, grateful for this beautiful place where we live, and thankful for the neighbors that we have here. We pray today during this meeting that thy Spirit might attend us, that we might make good decisions and do things that are in the best interest of as many people as possible. We're so thankful for all that we have in our lives, and we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll have a presentation for the newly graduated.
Mayor, I need to do the roll call first.
Oh, okay. Roll call. I'm so excited about the Citizens Academy. I just couldn't wait.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantalme.
Here.
Councilman Moore is excused. Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Councilwoman Cantalme, will you join me up in the front of the chamber Well, I know that of all you members of the academy, when I first addressed you at the beginning, I was saying that you probably will find this very enlightening to be able to understand the scope and the extent of the operations of our city, and how many great members of our departments, how dedicated they are, and how we keep the city running so, so well. So, I'm very pleased to see the graduates here. And Connie, I know who's spent a lot of time attending some of your sessions. We'll be presenting you with your certificates of graduation today.
So, just for those of you who don't know, we do have a Citizens Academy that the city hosts. The Citizens Academy serves residents by exposing them to city departments and operations. This program is intended to provide participants with insights on how local government works, promote open lines of communication, and offer a cleaner understan, clearer, and cleaner, we do cleaning too, understanding of how city services affect the everyday lives of its citizenry. So, I want to say thank you to all of our graduates today for taking the time to learn about our city government and getting to know us, and I hope we answered a lot of questions, and we will always be here if you have more questions. So, at this time, we will read off each of your names for you to come up and accept your certificate, and then we'll have everyone stay up here so we can do a group photo.
And I just have to say, I've enjoyed this. What a fun group of women and men we had. I'll meet you down at the bar sometime, and we'll have a glass of wine. It was that fun. Celeste Agina, John Burt, Christine Dixon, just stand up here and we'll get your picture. Valerie Ellis, Gordon, oh, just one at a time. Okay, all right, we'll get in line here real quick. Celeste. And John Burt, is John here? Christine Dixon. Gordon Huniggs? I hope I said that right. Okay. Teresa Greth.
Yeah, sorry, my gals.
Teresa, thank you. Kim Loffler. Kim, you here? Okay, Laura Mulvaney. And James, I'm going to get started on your name. James Absitnik, did I do that right? And Sharon, Sharon Absitnik.
That's right.
And Brooke Peck. And Jean Purley. Deborah Fingston, is that right? Deborah and I here today? Okay. Gerald, Gerald Fingston, you here today too? They must be lost. Patricia Potts. Jennifer Reynolds. Okay, we've got a few missing. They're probably at the other building. Diane Schaefer and Dawn Schaefer. Thanks, Diane. Terry Thomas. And Caterina Vaticano. Caterina, love that name. Not Italian by any chance, are you? I don't see Susan on here. Susan Testman? Skipped right over that. I think that's it.
All right, and then we're all going to get close together for a good picture, and make sure everybody gets the picture afterwards, too. So, I'm going to look at John here. Come on in. We all have to know each other.
See you guys.
All right, somebody join me in the front row here.
Mayor.
Councilwoman, you guys want to sit over there? Just make sure you can see everybody.
I'm short.
Everybody see me?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to do a couple. One, two, three. Smile. Come on, you guys had fun, right? All right, good. Thanks.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
I thought it was pretty cool. Laura was saying that the academy was even better and more fun than I described it at the beginning. So, either that's a deficiency on my part, or the fact that the city did such a great job presenting all their departments. So, thank you all again.
Thank you. The city, every department, as far as I'm concerned, did a fabulous job. I'm so grateful that the city did that.
Well, speaking of our great departments, our next presentation is going to be an acknowledgement and a thank you to the Streets Department, all the staff that worked on keeping our streets cleared of snow, along with the ground crew at the airport. So, I'd ask you all to come forward for a hearty handshake and a pat on the back. I mean, we've had some pretty serious snowstorms here over the last decade. I think you'll all remember the Snowmageddon if you were here for that. But, boy, we've had our series of sequential snowstorms, and it really taxed the ability of this crew to address and clear those streets. And I can't tell you how many complimentary comments I've received from people in different parts of the community, saying, "Boy, we got those streets cleared," and even, "I was able to fire up my snow blower and get my driveway clean so I could get to work on time." So, I want to thank all of you, and especially the crew out at the airport, to keep the runways and the taxiways and everything else clear. So, you guys just did a remarkable job. So, I'm presenting you, Brian, with the official snow boss cap.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a total team effort. Street Maintenance handles the streets, but there's just so much more that goes into this with all the facilities and the parking lots and all of that. The support that we get from all of you lends itself to us really focusing on the streets, and that's what's most important. That's what keeps emergency services running and keeps commerce moving and all of those things. I'd also like to thank all of our alternates from several different divisions, wastewater, water operations, all the people, the rec services, all the people that come in and take fill spots that we're lacking. We're a little shorthanded right now, a little understaffed. These guys come in with not a whole lot of experience, but they work their butts off. And it was, it was very successful. So, I can't, if I've missed anybody, I apologize, but everybody did such a great job. I could not be prouder of all of our people, the entire organization. So, thank you.
All right. Brian, you got a big snow boss hat on.
I find it funny that Amy Bonney's not here today, because I have a feeling that she's more responsible for this than anybody else, but I will do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just heard that 13 members of the various groups that were to be present and thanked and acknowledged didn't get the memo that we moved. So, they were still over at the other city hall chambers, so maybe we'll have a chance to thank them when they arrive.
If I could say just one more thing, I'm sorry, you just reminded me. So, part of the Street Maintenance Crew's not here today. They're actually getting a piece of Sixth Street. I'm sure a lot of people know that there was a major water main break on Sixth Street today, and with the weather coming in tomorrow, we certainly wanted to get that paved back so it didn't turn into a mud hole. So, I personally acknowledge them and thank them as well, but they're still out there getting it all wrapped up and making it safe for everybody. So, thank you.
They're like, honey.
I don't want to scare this biggest dog.
You bet. Thank you.
Wait, there's more.
Ah, here they come. Yay!
Yeah, we just thanked you for the ground crew and everybody that kept the runways and the taxiways and the parking areas and everything else clear and operational as much as possible. So, thank you. You can join the rest of the city crew that did such a great job during the series of storms. Yeah, you don't want to miss the group photo.
There you go. One more group photo. There you go. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, with the conclusion of that acknowledgement, what a, what a great team we have here in this city. Let's move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do not have any green speaker cards. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? That's all, Mayor.
Hearing none, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any member of the council want to pull any item off the consent agenda? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8F.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Please vote.
Oh, yeah.
Where do we vote?
All right, how do we vote? How do we vote here?
It'll pop up on your screen there.
Oh, there it is.
I don't see it.
And as I see your votes.
I don't see it on the screen. It's not here. It's not here.
Well, we got a couple of votes.
We might get a majority without just, so we'll just.
Yeah, just abstain.
All right, let me, let me try to reset that.
I might change my vote.
It's got to be.
Give me just a moment. It did pop up for some of you.
Yeah.
So, we had a motion from Councilmember Rusing and a Councilman Sishka seconded, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, now it should pop up on your screens.
Got it.
Do you see it? Anywhere? We don't have it down, it didn't make it down here at this end.
Councilwoman Cantalme, do you have yours?
No, I don't.
No, because I signed them in, and they're all voting.
This is a new, highly digital and effective communication system we have here. The only problem is the people behind the screens trying to figure out how to make it work.
So, I have a vote from Mayor Good, I have a vote from Mayor Protam, I have a vote from Councilman Tenney.
The senator dials, go right. Maybe it's like water pressure.
Are we on the wrong page?
Where does it come up?
So, I went, I went back.
I recorded the sound of the clicking. When I was at Water Issues, it comes up.
Would it be on this one?
Yes, I missed the click.
This little dialogue box. I think perhaps yours is not popping up, and yours is not popping up because you made the motion in second. Yours should pop up, though. Do you want to let me know what your vote is, please, members?
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing? I'm not sure if the computer is calculating that, but I think that's unanimous.
Nice, that's fancy.
So, I guess you can observe your screen there in the back, and you can see how we Very good, so that's a unanimous approval. Next item on the agenda is our liquor license.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Teresa June Morse, applicant for Salt and Pepper Cafe, location 443 Miller Valley Road. The licensing fees have been paid, the notice has been posted for 20 days, and no public comments have been received.
I think the applicant may be in attendance here.
I don't know that the applicant is, but I believe the owner is.
Well, it's great to see you both here. I had the distinction of being your very first customer. I'm not, I'm not incorrect. So, welcome to the community. Driving by your Salt and Pepper Restaurant frequently on my trips down to the city hall and back, I can see that you're becoming very popular.
It's working.
It's working so far, and I'm sure it will continue to work effectively. You want to tell us, for the other people that are not familiar with your restaurant, exactly what you're working on, and obviously, a liquor license is in addition to your menu.
So, it's a, it's a breakfast creation that, it's a little bit of an upscale breakfast that Juby puts together. He puts together some amazing dishes, so we can definitely sell it. It fits in, we don't really have a whole lot like that, so add it with some cocktails in the morning. Good place to start the party.
Well, thank you both, and good luck with your restaurant there. It's a great addition to our community in breakfast and even a short amount of lunch availability, too, right?
That's right.
Thank you both.
Thank you for your support.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for investing in the city.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Do you want me to try this time, see if you can vote? Okay. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Sorry.
Are you in the item?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're in the item.
Passes 6-0.
We're way faster than the last one. Okay, I'll entertain a next motion.
Oh, sorry, I'm back. Okay. Move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 223508 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application for Salt and Pepper Cafe, location 443 Miller Valley Road.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Still nothing for you two?
Aye.
Aye.
Where's the toggle switches?
Yeah, where's the old toggle switches? Who's missing? Councilmember Rusing, what was your vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, that's passes unanimously. Good luck, gentlemen, with your restaurant, and again, thank you for investing in Prescott. All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, and update regarding the mayor's Charter Review Commission. I don't have much of an update for you guys today. The commission continues to meet twice, twice monthly. I am currently working on putting together the proposed ballot language, which the commission will be reviewing at their April 3rd meeting, and then they will be conducting a study session presentation to council that all members of the public are welcome to attend on April 11th at our 1pm study session to review the work that they've done thus far and get feedback from council on the proposed amendments.
Well, that'll be here before you know it. April 3rd, huh? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Concerns? No? All right, well, thank you for that in-depth update. Next, we'll go to the legislative update. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Happy to give another legislative update for you. I vacillated between getting down and standing at the, at the podium down there and staying here, so I decided to stay. We'll see how it works. I think we should be pulling up the update on the screen for you, but I will go ahead and get started. Touching on some of these bills, which we've all touched on before, the first being the corporate income tax reduction bill. That one, you'll remember, passed out of the House, I believe, a week or two ago, and has been waiting to be pushed through the Senate side of things. So, that is currently in its Senate committee. Now, please remember that if this does go through, it would be about a $1 million loss at full implementation for our local revenues. There it is, on your screen. So, that is House Bill 2003. The next one I'll touch on is the House version of the food-for-home consumption tax. This one has gone quite a bit through the process. It was supposed to be discussed on the House floor today. However, it looks like it was held for discussion on the House floor, which is good news. You'll remember as well that this one would be about a $6 million hit to our local revenues if it made it through. Touching on the Senate side of those bills, there is Senate Bill 1063, which is up for its floor discussion in the House. So, that made it through the Senate and is awaiting to be heard on the House floor. That one is a little different than Senate Bill 1089, only in that the effective date is different. So, it would be effective July 1 of 2025 for that Senate Bill 1063 versus Senate Bill 1089. Again, those are, those are some of the biggest bills that we are worried about, obviously working with Barry Aaron's, the League of Cities and Towns, and hopeful that the, if it does get to the governor's desk, that it is vetoed, similar to the residential rental tax that we were fighting against for most of the session. Some good news, House Bill 2518, the Glassford Dells Regional Park, bill passed out of the. Bill passed out of the House yesterday, 39.
Tyler, do you have screen updates on that?
We do, which.
They're working on it.
Yeah, my friends in IT can scroll down for me. It should be quite a few more down. House Bill 2518. There it is. The Glassford Dells Regional Park Bill. This one would appropriate $3.5 million from the General Fund, the State General Fund, to this project. As everybody knows, we've been working lockstep with Prescott Valley and Yavapai County on obtaining this funding. We're working on budgeting for it in our next fiscal year. And this would be a huge boost to getting this project done, preserving that open space on Glassford Hill. It was, I spoke with Barry Aaron's. He was not expecting that it would, oh, perfect. Wow, this is getting fancy. Okay, I can control it now, so I'll do that. This one wasn't expected to go for a vote on the floor because it's going to be considered as a budget bill, but it ended up being considered on the floor, which turned out to be great news for us because it showed all the more support. And that's great news for the bill, and we'll continue to watch that as it makes its way through the budget process.
Yeah, I understand it passed even with some bipartisan votes.
It did. Yeah. So that's great to show overall support. The next bill, let me see if I, oh, wow, I can scroll. Look at that. All right, Senate Bill 1011, which has to do with partisan elections. You'll remember that this would allow cities to hold elections with political parties as part of that. Typically, we don't do that throughout the state, and we don't do that here in the city. It would allow for that if a council so desired. Inspection on sober living homes, I honestly, I need to follow up with Barry Aaron's on this one. It passed out of its, let me scroll down for you. It passed out of its Senate committee, but has not moved since. It hasn't been considered by the Senate as a whole. So this would allow us to do some further inspections at sober living homes for fire codes and zoning. But we need to check on this one to see if it has the support to get to the floor. Yes, Councilmember Rusing?
I'm sorry, I don't have a functioning screen here to make a comment, so is it okay if I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Going back to SB 1011, under municipalities partisan elections now. Is this something that's just going to be, is it going to be mandated? Or is it just optional if we choose to do that? We still control it?
It is optional.
Okay.
That's my understanding. So we could elect to do that. And I would suspect that many cities won't. Typically, cities run on nonpartisan elections for the fact of providing services. So that would certainly open up the discussion, but it would not be mandated.
Okay. All right, thank you for the clarification.
The next one has to do with political signs in tourism zones. And this is one that the legislature approved several years ago for cities to use, and we have been using it quite effectively since then. It actually helps a lot with reducing that clutter in the right-of-way. This would make it a lot more difficult for us to continue holding the boundaries of these sign-free zones that we currently have. So if approved, if passed, we would definitely have to look at adjusting those. Just so you know, this one is waiting to be heard. Actually, it did. It was heard in the House, its House Committee. So it's going to go to the House floor. And again, it's a Senate bill, so it already made it out of the Senate. Going down one more. Senate Bill 1103. This is the bill that allows cities, if the council desires, to authorize administrative personnel, so city staff, to do certain approvals in regards to site plans, development plans, preliminary Platts, and some other items here that you can see listed on your report. Again, it's not mandatory. It's an option if city councils would like to exercise that with city staff. That one was signed by the governor on the 3rd of March, so that made it through the process. Some very big news that happened just yesterday. Senate Bill 1117, which doesn't have a huge description, but that was a strike everything amendment bill, which would have completely upended our zoning, our abilities to regulate that locally, have a lot of public hearings and input on development. That failed in the Senate, 9 to 20, 921 technically.
Yeah, really.
That is huge news, and we worked really hard with Barry Aaron's and the League of Cities to make sure that our voice was heard and that our concerns were documented, and it definitely paid off with it failing yesterday. All right. And finally, the last bill, Charter Cities, the repeal. A couple of weeks ago, when I gave you an update, this bill, it's had an amendment since then. It was going to apply to all charter cities throughout the state, but since then, it was amended to apply to cities of a population of 500,000 or more. While that doesn't affect us, we're still opposed to it, and we've been expressing that down at the legislature, that we are a charter city. We support charter cities regardless of the population limit you put on it. We're still opposed to this. Yes, Councilmember Rusing?
Yeah, Councilmember Rusing.
So what was the rationale behind all this? I'm just confused about it.
Yeah, I haven't heard officially, but I have my guesses. One of them has to do with local elections. The city of Tucson, for example, is a charter city, and just like we run our elections during the odd years, Tucson does as well. The state legislature has historically not liked that. They would rather bring elections into those regular election cycles of even years. So because of that, they've tried different routes through different sessions to see if they could eliminate that. I'm guessing that this is a part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question also? Sorry.
Councilwoman can tell.
Non-functioning down here also. Did this have anything to do, Tyler, with the home rule designation that we also have?
It may, but I haven't heard that officially. Yeah. Charter cities, I think just in general, the fact that the legislature typically pushes against local control, which that falls into it, it certainly does, but overall, they prefer to have more oversight of cities. And our charter gives us a little more flexibility in some areas than they would like.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would see, I would consider this a dangerous precedent. We have 19 charter cities throughout the state, and if the top three were taken away from their ability to be chartered, our voice to maintain our local control would be even weaker. So let's hope that even with that exception that tries to make it a little more palatable, I think puts charter cities like Prescott at even higher risk. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, just a clarifying question. Is this, if this were to pass, it would put it on a ballot measure to then get voted on by the citizens?
Correct.
Okay. So even if it does pass, there's still a likely, or a potential, I should say, that it wouldn't get voted on by all the voters?
That's right. It'd go to the 2024 election for statewide voters to decide on.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Tyler. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
You can come up.
Thank you, Mayor, and the city council and citizens of Prescott. I'm sorry, I was a little late. On the topic of charter cities.
Your name and address, sir.
I'm Lee Brother Steven Gerard. I'm not from the city of Prescott, but I do speak on charter cities throughout the United States, Mayor, if I'm permitted to continue to speak.
Please, please continue.
Charter cities are the future for many possibilities in America. I'm impressed to learn that Prescott is actually under charter review. Beloved Mayor, I've already sent your wonderful city clerk an email. That hopefully is being forwarded to your charter review committee. We now have language for personhood to be inserted in the charter. And after an initial review of your demographics.
I need to interrupt real quick. I'm just worried we're going beyond the scope of the agenda item, which is legislative updates. If we're going state legislature, so, Mayor, to the extent you want to limit that. But I think that we're probably going to be going over a little bit outside the bounds of our agenda item.
Well, I just want to comment that charter cities are vital to continue to keep in the state of Arizona from a legal standpoint for the future of personhood cities. Thank you all. God bless you.
Thank you. All right, with that conclusion of the legislative update, we'll go to the next agenda item, which is the adoption of the 2023-2028 Fire Department Strategic Plan. So I know we have four fire department leaders here in attendance, and three of them are wearing ties.
You bet, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Holger Dura Fire Chief, and yes, I would like to start with the acknowledgement of my staff, both the ones that are in the room, the ones that are currently covering the stations and doing various other duties. This plan, as I mentioned during the work session, was the culmination of a work of a lot of people. 92% of the department participated. 76% of our department directors participated. Many of you council members gave us feedback, and many community members participated, both in 2019 as well as, again, in 2022 to affirm what we found in 2019. So today I bring you the plan for formal adoption with some of the feedback you gave us during the work session on February 14. So really, we just want to quickly update you on the changes that we made since that time. Talk about some of the funding assumptions, because I believe in that transparency. We really want to make sure everyone understands what is involved there, and then obviously ask for your formal adoption of the plan. Just as a reminder, this plan blends traditional solutions, fire stations, fire engines, with innovation and prioritizations, such as making sure we divert low-acuity call volume to more appropriate places, as well as to look at data and technology so that we can avert and even offset some of those fire stations that are still needed at the same time, but just not at the same pace and at the same rate. The plan is built on a logical flow that measures the impact of those allocated resources on the residents. And actually, next agenda item, when we talk about five additional firefighters, you'll see that connection. And I plan to bring any initiative that we ask you to fund with that connection to the strategic plan. And I think, like I said, it'll make sense in just a second when we talk about that agenda item. We've also completely updated with help from finance the budget structure around the plan. So when we now look at the fire department budget that will bring forward for fiscal year '24 consideration, you will see the plan nomenclature and the structure is now aligned so that those measurable outcomes and those metrics actually connect with the way that we are allocated money and the way that we spend money. So we also mentioned during the work session some key factors. We are at a crossroads because community growth, increased service demands, and rising costs have put us behind the curve on being able to serve the community at that same level that I think all of us would desire. The city of Prescott also, as you well know better than me, finds itself in an extremely complex city policy environment with public safety services simply being one of those primary functions that you all have to make decisions over. This plan is created in a manner that allows you, as the policymaker, solutions that can collaborate, prioritize, and innovate so that you can meet a multiple range of those stakeholder priorities. And that's also why, at the very beginning of the plan, we actually have the city strategic plan crosswalked into what the fire department impact is on the city's strategic plan. So a couple of updates that we made. First of all, the financial projections have been updated primarily with feedback from our finance department. And they really questioned our station renovations being enough. We had initially had that at $500,000 per station for the existing station renovations. And of course, with inflation and other material costs, they suggested a cost of $750,000 per station. We also added a financial appendix. Mark Woodfill, in his update a few weeks ago on the mid-year budget update, you saw that slide. That is literally the same five-year plan that's now is an appendix in the strategic plan. We also added the full-time equivalent count by initiative in the midsection of the plan so that there's clarity around how many full-time equivalent employees would be added if approved. And then we also have a work plan appendix to track annual progress. That's something that our accreditation requires us to have, but it's also a very good document for us to really condense and make sure that we're staying on track with the high-level initiatives that we're proposing. And then finally, we added a glossary. I do agree, the fire service particularly is full of acronyms, and this helps us, at least the independent reader and the public reader, to dissect that. Speaking of that, just a quick note, because of the length of this document, you noticed that it's not in your packet. And we made the decision to publish it, and it's currently published in this form on the fire department website, not just for you all to reference, but also for citizens to refer to, including all of the appendices that I'm talking about here today. The overall funding costs in capital would propose $31 million in new capital. And I'm going to put a caveat out there in just a second, because I know that makes a lot of folks maybe gulp, rightfully so. We also have $6.6 million in new ongoing operational costs. So that's obviously mostly personnel costs, such as staffing a fire station and some of the other low-acuity initiatives that we're talking about. But I really want to emphasize one primary thing, and that is, in the strategic plan, these are financial projections for planning purposes. This is not a budget request. So you taking action on adopting this plan does not authorize us to spend this money. That is still part of the regular public process, the regular budget process, that has all of the prioritization at stake that you all need to take care of. So please know that this is not a budget request. It simply tells you this is what it would cost to build, you know, those initiatives. The other thing I really want to emphasize here is that our expenditures on capital, because it's so expensive and the city has so many needs, should be aggressively multipurpose in nature. So for instance, Councilmember Rusing and I have talked about things like, could we combine conceptually now a library and a fire station in the same project if you're already running utilities to that? Police substations come to mind. It's a really good, smart, you know, leveraging of public safety resources in North Prescott. As well as, we need space for emergency management, IT infrastructure. Those are just some examples of what I'm talking about here, that we make sure that we have capital expenditures meet multiple objectives. And then finally, the biggest thing is, all of the approved or implemented initiatives would be measured for the impact on the residents that we would report to you in our annual report that we will start after this in March of every year. So moving forward, again, we talked about the innovation that's needed to balance the needs of the backbone of the emergency response system along with that innovative approach, and that has to happen simultaneously to meet our needs. The initiatives really make sure that the sustainability of the staffing and responsible investments in existing and new infrastructure is taken care of. We need to take care of the existing stations along with building those new stations that we've talked about for quite a while now. It is a critical moment for us and the department. We need to take action. But I believe that that action, blended with transparency, accountability, will help us make sure that we're meeting our public safety mission now and into the future. And that is it for that part of the presentation. Any questions that I can take?
I appreciate that, Chief. Now I know why you got three ties on. But, you know, I realize that's a long-term strategic plan. And we know that ultimately, we probably need three new fire stations scattered throughout the city, but mostly focused on the growth in the North Prescott area. So budgeting for those will probably be sequential. And I'd certainly like to see if we could find a way to move forward with one primary station in the near future that might be multi-force, police substation, fire station, emergency medical response, et cetera. So it's a combination of identifying the right location, making sure that we have access to the property, and then budgeting the capital to be able to build it and equip it with vehicles and other equipment, and then the challenges of staffing it for the long term. So we'll be looking at those proposals when we do our budget workshop and see how much and when we can proceed with that. Tyler, you had a question?
I just wanted to make a comment, Mayor, if I could. I had the pleasure of joining the fire leadership and members in the creation of this, and it was an extremely thorough process. At the end of it, I was kind of amazed at just how thorough you can really get, and I know that it was measured, thoughtful. And while these are large budget numbers that they're looking at, in order to fill our future needs, I was a proponent of saying, be honest, right, Chief? I said, let's look at what we honestly need to get our service levels where we want or need them, and let's go from there, and we'll figure it out over the years. But I just want to let you know that they were extremely professional, thoughtful, and measured in all of their approaches. And I'm excited to see, because these come with performance measurements and an ability to measure their outcomes to see if they're hitting their goals and if they're on the right track. So. So this certainly won't be a project, or a plan, I should say, that will be put on the shelf. Very well done.
Well, I think the community at large generally supports our police and fire and all of our first responders, public safety, but particularly when you're allocating tax dollars, being able to measure the return on that investment is something I think you're alluding to, Tyler, and I think with that type of professional analysis, I think the community at large is going to be supportive of moving forward with those strategic plans. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, Chief, I appreciate a lot of what Tyler said, the approach you took, and the fact that you were willing to sit down with every member of council and kind of walk us through on a one-on-one level what this strategic plan looked like. And I guess the other thing I'd say, I appreciate the approach you're taking that is data-focused and data-driven, and I think that's a model for other departments in the city to leverage. Because, again, if we're going to have outcomes that we're trying to achieve, we need to measure them, we need to know, how are we doing on those objectives or outcomes right now already? So I would say thumbs up to this plan that you took the work to do it, and also thumbs up to other departments out there. I would love to see more of this kind of strategic plan and data-driven process. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I just want to thank Chief Holger and city staff for coming up with such a visionary plan. I have a feeling that the CAN has been kicked down the road for many years. People just wanted to keep growing, but as a result, they didn't want to keep up with city services. So thank you very much for taking on this task, and you have my support 100%.
Councilwoman Ken Talmi.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of interviewing our chief yesterday and did a kind of a deep dive into the strategic plan, a few times, actually, because it's very, very thorough. I'm also supporting you 100%, and as they say, the numbers don't lie. When you come back and you can produce that kind of data-driven information, it's very clear to me that we should have done this quite a few years ago, but it's a start now, and over a five-year period, that's not a big ask, but thanks for doing it.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Well, I thank you, Chief. It's a very substantial plan, and as Mayor Protam and others have mentioned, very data-driven and supportive. So that certainly makes our job, when it comes to budgeting, a little easier. Thanks again.
Thank you. We need a motion to adopt it, yeah?
I think we do.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, if you'll allow me to.
Go ahead, please.
Move to adopt 2023 through 2028 Fire Department Strategic Plan.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Where do we vote?
Oh, here it is.
There it is.
Passes 6-0.
It's amazing how quickly we adapt. Thanks again, Chief.
Well, I'm up here for the next one, too, sir.
And the next one is approval of the movement of five firefighter positions from the fiscal year 23 budget funded from a grant to be funded by the general fund.
Well, good afternoon again, Mayor and Council, Holger Dura Fire Chief. So we're bringing forward a request to fund five of the safer grant positions that we were not approved for in fiscal year 23 forward now because of the immediate needs that we have, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those here in just a second. Before I get into this, I do want to frame one piece of this that was an oversight on my part when the council memo was submitted to all of you, and that is, we initially applied for eight safer grant positions and had one approved by all of you at the beginning of this year. That still leaves three of those positions that we're currently still in need of, but we need your authorization to move forward with that safer grant funding. So if, depending on the outcome of this agenda item, it would be good for us to include that instruction, so if you instruct us to proceed with safer grant funding or an application, that we are authorized to do that. Okay, so first, oops, clicked a little too fast there. Obviously, this would be the movement of those positions that are currently in the strategic, or sorry, in the city budget already, is a full-time equivalent count under grant funding, and move that into authorization for general fund support, and the finance department is here as well to answer any specific questions that you might have on that. Moving right in here, we would immediately begin the process of filling those positions if all of you approve those, and really, let's talk about the need here real quick. So first of all, we are really in a position where we are unable to staff the department without going into what we talked about during the work session in February, a force hiring. That is mandating someone stays on duty, which means downstream impacts to their fatigue, their well-being, daycare, parenting responsibilities, and all of those things, and usually those decisions can get made up to 30 minutes before the shift starts, and that's an additional 24 hours that that individual then would serve in the fire station. The other thing is, it reduces the risk of what we call brownouts. Now, I want to make sure that I emphasize, we have not had that situation in a while, and we had that a few years ago. However, depending on long-term injury leaves and other conditions, without increased staffing, we are at a risk for that occurring, should we not be able to find the staff needed in the amount of time to fill those. It gives us some flexibility. The other piece that I think is really important, considering the last agenda item that we just talked about with the strategic plan, if we were to move down the road with those fire stations, and I do agree, we do need some extra capacity in our Fire Department to help us with succession planning. So for instance, additional battalion chiefs require ride-along time with a sitting battalion chief, and that takes time. In order for us to do that, we need to have that little bit of an extra added capacity in our system to be able to take that person off their response engine and give them a day with the sitting battalion chief to prepare them for that position. We also need the ability to move members offline to manage and run training academies. So if we're bringing on 12 to 15 firefighters for a new fire station, that requires somebody to do the instruction, to the teaching, and the coordination, and the administration of those folks. And so this is another example of how that will impact our ability to better run that part of the department and be a lot more efficient. We talked about the force hires. I also want to just reemphasize that about 75% of our line firefighters currently carry very significant program management responsibility in health and safety, EMS, equipment, and clothing, and supplies. This staffing initiative would also allow us to spread that workload out a little bit more among more folks. We have seen an ISO rating increase at Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. Now, an increase in ISO language is not a positive thing. That is actually going in the opposite direction. That has a downstream impact on insurance ratings. We know from what they were told, based on their report, that they had direct tie, in part, to their staffing levels, that they're also trying to increase at this time. And so I would contend that we run the possibility of having a similar situation happen when our ISO rating is due again in a couple of years. Now, I can't promise that one way or the other, but I do want to put that out there, that that is a possibility. And then, one big concern that I have is that the opportunities for errors and mistakes have increased. We have paramedics that push cardiac drugs at 2:00 in the morning. If you're doing that at the end of a 72-hour shift, the opportunity for an error or mistake increases, and this allows us to hopefully get our folks a little bit more rest and recovery time to decrease that possibility. The other impact that we're seeing now, and this is actual, oh, yes, sir.
Before you proceed, can you give me a little better understanding of the ISO increase and what that actually looks like?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, the city Prescott Fire Department is an ISO 2-rated department, and that rating from the Insurance Services Office goes into when somebody applies for a homeowner's policy or commercial insurance policy, it's in essence the modifier rate, to some extent, that determines what the rate is that's going to be charged to that person for the cost of that insurance during the term. The ISO rating is a comprehensive rating that every fire department in the United States is subject to, that measures everything from water supply, response time, capability, and stations. And so the staffing components of this comes directly from having an effective firefighting force come together for a structured fire, and that requires a certain number of people and a certain time component, and that is the impact that CAFMA saw specifically. I don't know what their ISO rating is and what it went up to, however, I can tell you that, you know, one point does have an impact, and that impact usually is felt more, in my experience, in the commercial sector. Now, one thing that's difficult for me to report on here is that those are proprietary formulas that each insurance provider has. So I wish I could tell you objectively, hey, you know, with an ISO rating of one point, you get this in return, and that's very difficult to do because of the number of insurance providers, and again, like I said, the proprietary nature of how that actually impacts a policy.
So is lower number better, or?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So it's a matter of almost a risk rating?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Thank you for that, and I apologize for getting you off.
Oh, not a problem.
The roll there.
Not a problem. All right. Now, the impact on minimum staffing overtime that we have seen, so this is actual numbers. We are currently projected to finish the year at, I can't quite see that far, $684,544 in overtime. Now, before we wonder about overtime for fire departments, two things I want to frame. Number one, the FLSA, Federal Labor and Standards Act, requires us to pay overtime for firefighters working a 56-hour shift week, which is basically every fire department in the United States. That is baked into the basic full-time equivalent cost of employee. However, the overtime increases that you see here that are less predictable, and it also impacts the airport, are minimum staffing backfill coverage. So somebody takes the day off, we slide another firefighter in on overtime, a time and a half, and that's the number that you see here, the increase here on the screen primarily. And the reason why we wanted to highlight this for you is because the expenditure of those funds, we now have one data point that shows us that actually investing into more firefighters would make this probably level out, if not decrease, I would imagine. Now, the question that I might think might be on your mind is, okay, what's the formula? How many full-time equivalents do we need, and where is the efficiency point? That's what I'd like to figure out as well, but I need to have these firefighters for us to take a deep breath and do that. And conversations that we've had leading up to this meeting, I fully intend with this strategic plan that you just saw that's data-driven, to do exactly that, to give you those numbers once we have a little bit of time to catch our breath, which also then helps inform our safer grant application for those additional three firefighters. Before I get off that, are there any questions on this slide? Okay. All right. So I promised you we'd go right into what the strategic plan would do for us. So these are the three key, high-level strategic results that will help us if you choose to move forward with these firefighters. First of all, it's a 3% year-over-year reduction in our effective response force. The way that we would do that is to begin again staffing some of our low-acuity units to keep the engines more available, so we would see an impact on response times. We would also hope that we would be able to strategically locate a fire station, as you mentioned. I already talked about the impact of the additional staff that would help us with the training and succession planning required to bring that station online. The other thing that I think is really important is, I would expect us to start seeing a reduction in our year-over-year injury rates of our employees. Less tired employees get hurt less. That's pretty easy, I think, to draw correlation there. And then, lower on our strategic plan key metrics, we also want to see, these are key metrics directly out of the strategic plan that we just talked about. I'd like to really start establishing a baseline of firefighters that are working no more than 400 hours of minimum backfill overtime annually. That's sort of our initial target point that I think is, you know, healthy. That's a little bit under two shifts a month, and that's, you know, I think a sustainable level of overtime. And then also, we have already administered, a couple of years ago, the Fire Organizational Culture Safety Safety Survey, and that measures stress and burnout and anxiety. I'd like to measure that and see what the impact would be of us adding these additional firefighters, once we, again, like I said, are able to catch our breath a little bit and move forward. So the fiscal impact is, for the balance of this year, $100,000 from the general fund, with continuing annual impact of $480,000 starting in fiscal year 24. And again, like I said, the recommended action is on the screen for you here, and if you choose to move forward with this, we also would like your feedback and instruction on what you would like us to do with a safer grant. Again, we'll be asking for those firefighters one way or the another, but we do need your approval to go ahead and do that. And that is the presentation.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Dura, my best guess is that there's no one at this diocese not in favor of more firefighters and public safety being greater for all of our citizens. I'd like to hear both from you, maybe from Mark, if possible. If I vote for $480,000 of this, what am I not going to be able to provide to our citizens as a result of that? Anything? Do we just have $480,000 sitting in the box over there that we just pull out that's in a contingency fund, or what does this mean for us in the short term and the long term?
Thank you, Councilman, Mayor and Councilman Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director. And just to be clear, we talked about this a little bit two weeks ago at the mid-year budget presentation. Obviously, it wasn't budgeted in general funds, so it's a great question of what can't we do? Revenues are coming in a little strong, stronger than we projected, so that's good, so we can definitely cover the $100,000 for the remainder of this year through that without having to reduce any service levels. The question is, are the firemen a priority as we move into the '24 budget cycle? And I think, obviously, they were a priority for council, hopefully from a safer grant, but that doesn't, as Chief pointed out, and has been pointed out through the strategic plan, doesn't really eliminate the need, the fact that the federal government isn't going to pay for it for us. So I guess that's the question, is by this action, you are, as a council, saying this is a priority, and budgets grow each year from revenue growth and those things, so we want $480,000 a year allocated right now for next year off the top. What does that mean? You won't be able to do? All the requests that were submitted this year as we start the budget process, which is a little crazy, my favorite time of year, all the crazy requests, a lot of those obviously will not be able to be done. I can't really say specifically this means we can't have the 10 fire, the 10 police officers that were requested for next year. You know, that'll be as we get the revenue projections, which we still have not gotten. I can say, we will be able to add other positions, not the number that have been requested, but we will be able to look at other needs. It will not reduce any service levels that exist today, but what you won't be able to do next year is yet to be seen, as we're still pulling revenues together. So that's not a very straightforward answer, Councilman, I'm sorry about that, but it will all depend what council's priorities are as we walk through the budget process.
I didn't, thank you, I appreciate that. I think it's a very useful answer for me. I didn't anticipate you would tell me, well, there's $480,000 for the potholes we won't be able to fill, or there's $480,000 less that will go into the police budget, or $480,000 less open space we'll be able to acquire either near Glassford Hill or around the airport or whatnot, but ultimately, some of those trade-offs may occur, I'm hearing you say, if we...
There's always going to be trade-offs, and as I said in here, there are going to be decisions to be made by this council as we work through the budget workshop.
I'm super in favor of this, I just don't want to find myself in a position where a department I'm very, very much in favor of, who has clearly looked at this very, very carefully, data-driven, got to us first, and we said, yeah, absolutely, let's do half a million dollars toward that for next year, and then that puts us in a position that we cannot appropriately fund other needs for next year. So help me as I'm trying to, maybe there's no helping me, but as I'm trying to make good decisions, either or both of you, please help me determine if I can, in good conscience, say, absolutely, let's do this, and still have room in my mind and in our budget for excellent proposals that are data-driven that come from other departments later.
And again, there will be room in the budget, there will not be for all the department heads still in the room and council. There will not be room for everything that was... There will not be room for everything that was submitted this year, which there never is. This was a priority last year of council. We were hoping for a grant. We didn't get a grant. We're not proposing, Chief and I talked, we're not proposing to fill all eight right now, because that would be a bigger impact, close to $900,000 a year. We didn't want to have that affect the additional things that council could allocate as we go into next year. But there is a need. There is a significant overtime budget happening here. Some of that will be less. I can guarantee you, on my limited years of service, that it will not be a one-for-one. We won't see a $480,000 reduction in overtime. I would hope we would see some as we go through it. And again, I think that's what the chief was saying. But there will be room to look at other needs. Will there be room to buy open space? You know, that's all going to depend on how much you want, how much you want the other three firefighters, or how much you want the police officers being requested. How important is that compared to getting a fire station built in the next two years? That type of stuff.
Okay. Well, good. I really appreciate that. It helps me get big picture around this. It's a good reminder that we were looking at ideally eight personnel. We're looking more realistically at five going forward. I really appreciate that, and it helps me get my head where my heart already was, which is this is an absolute need for our city. Thank you both.
Councilwoman, can you tell me?
Yes, Mark just, thank you, Mayor. Mark just touched on something, too. I wanted to drive this home. Is there any way you could put that graph back up on there?
Oh, you bet.
I was looking at, I looked at this stuff a lot yesterday, and the graph here, and this is just a reminder, because we just covered this, but the estimated impact is $480,000 for FYI, or FY '24. But if you look at this graph here, it's projected, estimated, at $684,544 in overtime. So presumably, a lot of that overtime will go away when we have relief for the firefighters that are so taxed at this moment, presumably.
Well, yeah, and that's what we were just talking about. I wish I had a metric for you based on our past staffing history that would say, hey, this is the factor that you're going to see in terms of the trade-off reduction. I'm telling you, that's where I really want to see us go, is that every additional firefighter we get, we are able to tell you exactly what that means in overtime savings. But just like Mr. Woodfield just said, you will not see that curve go down, like, you know, we're not going to see this regress three to four years in the past. We will see it level out, and we will definitely, you know, stop the bleeding, so to speak. At what percentage and what rate? I wouldn't want to wager a guess at this point.
Well, if we take the numbers that we know, starting in FY '18, at 317,209, that's essentially doubled plus. So it's going to help if we have more help, more firemen.
Yes.
They will, the overtime will come down significantly, is my belief, but...
Yes, we will see an impact on overtime. I would agree.
Mark, you're the numbers guy. Could the financial impact of $480,000 just go away with, let's say we even had a 60% reduction in overtime?
Well, obviously, that would help. And again, we're not really comparing apples and apples here. This is overtime pay. This is not the full cost of overtime pay. It does not include the retirement on that. It's not include the Medicare on that, that type of thing. The $480,000 that we talked about for next year does include those factors. So we're not really, you know, we'd be looking at more, we need to see a $300,000 reduction in this as opposed to a $480,000 to break even. That said, I think it's, you know, and, you know, I have no doubt, you know, all of our city departments try to do the best job they can with the staff that they have in the most efficient way possible, and the fire department is no exception. So I think you will see this number come down, hopefully. I mean, other than the additional pay, people really don't want to work this much overtime. It's stressful to your family, it's stressful to you and your body. It is unrealistic, Councilwoman, though, just to say that we're going to be able to get back to that fiscal year '18 number.
Right.
You're just not going to, I'd like to think it could happen, but there are just other demands out there. There's different pay levels, there's all sorts of other factors that have also brought this up.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Holger, what was the staffing level, FTEs, maybe you could give me, in 1992 versus today?
So 1995, the last figure that we had, we were at 45. That was contending also that Station 75 at Lee Boulevard was staffed in conjunction with central, at that point, Central Yabupai Fire District. And in essence, we have not added a significant number of staff, with the exception of three positions per shift when we staffed the alternative response unit, I believe, two years ago at this point. But that was, again, to start a new service level. But since that time, we haven't really added a significant number of staff. You're absolutely correct.
Well, I happened to ask Siri what our population was in 1992, so we're comparing, you know, '95, a little more.
I found this on the web for what our population was in 1992. Check it out.
You're out of order.
Yeah, thank you, Siri. Our population today is over 46,000, which is a substantial increase. Have we kept up with anywhere close to that increase in population?
No. And the other component that I do want to mention there, since you mentioned that the population, our daily average population, considering transit commuters, residents, as well as tourists, is 100,000 on average.
That's a big wow.
Yeah.
It sounds like we have some work to do. Sounds like we have some work to do to find the money to do that work. And, you know, I just think that continuing to tell the community that we've been behind the eight ball, we've had other priorities that have kind of trumped what you're talking about today, but now is, trumped, I'm sorry, now it's time to get with the program. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the SAFER grant. I have a question. Why was it that we did not get the SAFER grant? And what are we doing differently to ensure that we get a SAFER grant on our next application?
Yeah, it's a great question. We were not able to get specific answers as to why our request was turned down. I will tell you that I know most departments in Arizona that I've been in touch with have submitted a SAFER grant application, and only Phoenix and Lake Havasu City were awarded SAFER grants in the last cycle. We did have meetings now with both the Verde Valley, as well as Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, to coordinate our SAFER grant application. That has been reviewed by external grant review bodies. We're actually, literally, today, Lori Burkine, one of our staffers, is currently integrating those changes into the SAFER grant application to hopefully increase that success rate. Now, again, I also want to mention something that I did during the work session. Keep in mind, SAFER grant funding is good for three years, and after those three years, the municipality has to take over the funding for those positions. And so the analogy that I used during the work session was, it's kind of like buying firefighters on a credit card. The payment is going to come due. And so that's something eyes wide open that we want to make sure that we're aware of as well.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Mayor Bertin.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the analogy you just mentioned, Holger, because that was top of my mind about the grant. So I found that really useful in the study session, useful today. I'm in a little bit of a similar place than, or to Mr. Tenny, in the sense that I have concern about hearing this out of order, out of the budget process. And I guess, I appreciate the clarity that Mark brought to it, you know, but I just, I guess my assumption is, you wouldn't be asking for this out of order if it wasn't a desperate priority for the department. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we, if you look at the fact that we actually asked during the fiscal year '23 budget process, that, so the current budget has these positions approved, we're simply asking for a shift in the funding allocation from grant funding to general fund allocation.
Great. That's, I appreciate that information. I just don't want other city employees slashing your tires because you got to the council first, so.
Yeah, and I do want to emphasize again that point. I mentioned this at a management team meeting just two weeks ago. I recognize the general fund displacement that this plan, as well as this request creates, and I'm dead serious about the collaboration that I mentioned, both during the strategic planning conversation, as well as other conversations. I do think we need, this is one city, and I am not about to cut another department off at the pass. That's not the way we do things here in Prescott, so.
Agreed. And I appreciate that comment as well. I think it's, you know, public safety is kind of very high on the priority of what municipalities do, and so I do think it's appropriate, and I take you on your word, that you wouldn't be asking right at this moment if it weren't, you know, a desperate need for the department. So thank you.
Yeah, I think we all remember how risky the city was put into concern during the Crooks fire last year, and fortunately, the wind and the amount of moisture and things like that cooperate with us. But we have to, we have to take these steps to make sure that we're going to be able to be in a safe environment throughout the year, in addition to the wildfire season. Any other comments or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I think we need to make two motions. One for proceeding with the SAFER grant funding, and then the other one is, as it's written, is that it? Okay.
I believe you're correct.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve moving five firefighter positions in the FY '23 budget funded from a grant to be funded out of the general fund.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Excellent.
Thank you.
And now we're even ahead of the screen. We're waiting for the screen to populate. Entertained a second motion.
Mayor, I move that we proceed with the SAFER grant funding.
I believe we're going to be approving the ability to apply for the SAFER grant.
Okay. Mayor, I move that we proceed with applying for the SAFER grant.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we now will move tie to me, I believe.
Approval of city contract number 2023-145 with Cactus Asphalt for the fiscal year '23 multi-layer pavement preservation project, and approval of night and weekend work.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works, one tie. The item I have for you today is our FY '23 multi-layer pavement preservation project. As you see by the map, we are covering a lot of ground with this project. I'll give you a brief rundown of the areas we're going to. We're going to be working in Longview Estates with a microseal project, Spire Drive and Tower Road over in the Commerce area near ADOT County facilities over there with a chip seal project. Willow Creek Road will be getting a fog seal from Green Lane north out to Willow Lake Road. Around the Whipple Curve, the side streets on the north side of that, a lot of local streets there, will be getting a double layer of microseal. Granite Creek Park, which will be funded by the Parks Department, the parking lot there will get a chip seal and a PMM, which is a polymer modified master seal. It's a coating that goes on top of the chips. Its advantageous in parking lots. The Arizona Avenue area, which is Arizona, Whipple, North Washington, that area kind of in and around Ken Lindley Field, will be getting a scrub seal, microseal, and a chip seal. Scrub seal is an application that goes down first. It acts like basically a full road width crack seal for the whole project, but it doesn't make a good wear surface, so you chip on top of that. Robinson Drive, which was recently finished about three years ago, is getting a fog seal to preserve that pavement. And then Copper Basin, some side streets off Copper Basin South, basically to the county line up to Mountain Club, will be getting both single and double chip seals, depending on the severity of the, or how much traffic and how deteriorated the asphalt is. These are considered pavement preservation methods. Our project will repair distressed pavement and crack sealed areas that we need to prior to the applications. The existing pavement in these areas are in the very good-to-good condition. The advantages of this is that it is, it's very cost-effective treatment, and it will increase our PCIs in a lot of these local roads, which is the area we're lacking the most. The project will treat approximately 34 lane miles in total. As one of the other items we're asking for you to pass is night work. We're looking at the possibility of doing night work on Willow Creek Road. Obviously, the traffic impacts out there can be substantial during the daytime. For procurement, the city is permitted by code to purchase services under another publicly bid contract. This project will use the cost competitive procurement process completed by Pinal County. Cactus Asphalt entered into a contract with Pinal County on June 17 of 2018. There have been four amendments to that contract that extends the contract date out to June 26 of 2023. Our project will be completed by that timeframe. Staff received a proposal from Cactus Asphalt on March 7, and Public Works is recommending a award of a not-to-exceed amount of $1,550,000. The city's standard cooperative use contract will be used for this contract, and funding for the project is budgeted in FY '23 and available in the Streets Fund. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Tim, how much experience do you have working with Cactus Asphalt?
They've done several jobs for us, both in a bid situation and also in a cooperative use project.
Within the last few years?
In the last, in probably the last four or five years, they've done several projects for us. I don't have an exact number for you, but they've done a lot of work for us, especially in this type of application, chip seals, PMM applications. This is one of the first projects we've gone to scrub seals with a chip seal over the top. Jerry, my pavement program manager, myself, went down to Avondale to look at several of the projects they've done down there, see how they're holding up. It looks like it's going to be a very good application for us.
Well, that's encouraging. And I know in the past, when we've entertained some out-of-area contractors, some of them have been good, and some of them have been less than good.
Yes, sir.
So it's good to hear that you've worked with them, and they've done quality performance. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Tenny.
Not sure what you see on your screen. Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. Tim, I appreciate the good presentation and the reminder that, though we certainly have some streets in town that are in worse shape than these, you've mentioned specifically, these are all in good, very good condition. In my mind, the analogy is kind of like if I have three cars, and one is really old and kind of a clunker, and is just barely making it. Why on earth am I going to bring my newest car to get scheduled maintenance? Well, it's cost-effective to do that. It's what it sounds like to me, and so I appreciate the data that you use in your department to make these good decisions. Really quickly, before we move to, later on, we're going to make a motion regarding the night and weekend work. You mentioned the need for that at Willow Creek. Totally makes sense to me. Will it be limited just to Willow Creek? Can you tell us that?
That's the only area we're anticipating right now. We typically don't need to do night work on local streets. We can usually use a flagging operation to maintain one-way traffic on streets of that nature. Willow Creek, you reduce that to one lane, especially at different parts of the day. The last thing we want to do is decrease it by one lane, say, in particular, southbound on a Tuesday morning. It would be, it's just not good practice.
I was hopeful you would say all of those things. You'll have my full support. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I think there's two motions here, Mayor, if I might. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-145.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Just waiting. There we go. Passes 6-0.
All right, getting better all the time. Second motion.
And Mayor, because it will avoid locking Willow Creek Road down in the middle of the day, I move to approve night and weekend work for this same contract.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right, very good. That completes I to me. All right, very good. That completes tie to me. Now we go to item F.
Approval of city contract number 2023-152, Southwest Slurry Seal LLC for the fiscal year 2324 Prescott Lakes Parkway Microsurfacing Project utilizing the city standard cooperative contract.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Tim Sherwood, Public Works. The next item I have for you is our FY2324 Prescott Lakes Parkway Microsurfacing Project. Although it encompasses some other areas in the general vicinity, we'll be looking at doing Prescott Lakes Parkway from Willow Lake Road, SR89, in around the Prescott Lakes and base of school area, Lakeview and Solstice Drive, essentially from Smoke Tree to the end of pavement at the end of Lakeview, and the Eagle Ridge subdivision in various areas. Microseal application consists of applying a mixture of emulsified oil and crushed aggregates to an existing roadway surface. The treatment helps preserve the underlying pavement structure and provides a new smoother driving surface. Again, this is a pavement preservation method project. Project will include micromilling in areas and repair of distressed pavement prior to the microseal application. The existing pavement in these areas are in marginal to good condition, and again, it's a cost-effective treatment. Will increase our PCIs on all these local roads. The project will treat approximately 20 lane miles, and then again, the city is permitted by code to purchase services under another publicly bid contract. This project will use the cost competitive procurement process completed by the city of Glendale. Southwest Slurry entered into a contract with Glendale on December 13th, 2022. It is a one-year contract, therefore the contract ends on December 13th of 2023. Staff received a final proposal from Southwest Slurry on January 31st of this year, and Public Works is recommending award of a contract to Southwest Slurry Seal LLC in the amount of $1,500,000. The city's standard cooperative use contract will be used for this project, and funding for the project is available in the Streets Fund. And with that, I will happily answer.
So again, Tim, what's your experience with Southwest Slurry?
Again, another contractor we've used several times. It's pretty much a specialty contractor. This is what they do. This is all they do. So it's, it's one of those things where if I was to take it out to bid, I'd probably get one bid. There's just not a lot of people that do this type of work. And we've had very good experiences with them in the past.
Very good.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Did you have a question?
No, I just, I appreciate you asking that question. That's the very question I have. Whenever we have a less familiar contractor, I want to know that same thing, because.
Yeah, I mean, they're contracting with the city of Glendale, but they're out of Tucson. So I imagine a project of this scope probably is worth their time and effort to come up and.
They have an office in Phoenix. I think they might have an office in Phoenix and Tucson.
All right, very good. No other concerns? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-152.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. Okay, moving on to item G.
Approval of city contract number 2023-157 with Asphalt Paving and Supply Inc. for construction of the Bud Sage Court paving and drainage improvements.
So that's how that works for the tie. You put one on and you just use it sequentially.
I appreciate Sarah bundling these all into one nice little package for me. That makes it a lot easier. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Tim Sherwood, Public Works. Next project I have for you is the Bud Sage Court paving and drainage improvements. Bud Sage Court is a cul-de-sac up in Yavapai Hills. We've got several local streets in Yavapai Hills that are ongoing drainage problems. A lot of the subdivision was built in the county when it was first constructed and then incorporated in the city, but there's continuing stormwater issues on the east side of this cul-de-sac with water jumping in the curb and driveway approaches, and several of the houses on the east side of the road are built below the street level. So in heavier rain events, we get a lot of water that runs down into people's garages. The project will construct a new storm drain system and replace the deteriorated asphalt that's there now. It's a fairly small project. Project was advertised in January. We received three bids on February 16th of 2023. Public Works is recommending award of the low bid to Asphalt Paving and Supply of Prescott Valley in the amount of $299,998.98. Staff has reviewed, received written confirmation of the bid from Asphalt Paving and Supply, verification of their license, bonding references, and past performance of previous municipal contracts has been completed and deemed satisfactory. City's standard construction contract will be used for this project, and funding for the project is budgeted in FY23 and available in the Streets Fund. And again.
I think I recall taking a look at this particular area. Is this where the curb is starting to separate from the roadway because of the slope on the side of?
No, sir. I think I know where you're referencing, and that's over on the, I'm going to say the south side of Bradshaw, going up from Gurley Street.
I know this is up in the Yavapai Hills area or the ranch.
We may be thinking of something different. I know there's another street that we're looking at right now as well that's, that's got some issues, but it's not located in Yavapai Hills. So we may be talking about two different locations.
Very good. Questions or concerns?
Oh, well, thank you, Tim. I just wanted to make sure that you have a plan to notify the neighbors and keep them up to date with this project, so they're aware of, you know, any traffic issues or where, you know, not parking on the street, that kind of thing.
Yep. We have, Public Relations is built into the construction contract, so the contractor is required to have a public relations firm involved. We've also had conversations with the residents already. APS, the power company, has already went out there and done some relocates in order to accommodate the new storm drain system of their infrastructure, so the residents have seen some activity out there already. And they're, it's one of the situations where they're going to be very happy to see us.
Okay, well, I'm sure if they're getting their garages flooded, and there won't be any blasting on this project.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, not for 300 grand.
We never know.
All right, any other questions or concerns? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-157.
Bud Sage.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. All right, moving on to item H.
Approval of city contract number 2023-162 with Combs Construction Company for the miscellaneous concrete project Pleasant Street curb gutter and gutter replacement utilizing the city's standard cooperative contract.
Last one for today, I promise. Good afternoon.
I have for dry cleaning, I think.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Tim Sherwood, Public Works. Next project is our miscellaneous concrete project. It's titled the Pleasant Street Curb and Gutter Replacement, but there are, as you see by the map, there are several locations that we are doing some work. On Pleasant Street from Gurley to Willis, we're replacing extensive sections of curb and gutter around 1,200 lineal feet of curb and gutter on that street that is failing. Some driveways and sidewalks, and they're just deteriorated beyond repair. This work needs to be complete prior to any pavement repairs being made. If we tried to do a pavement repair project up against the damaged curb and gutter, we're just going to end up decreasing the lifespan of the pavement. So this is the first step in rehabilitating that block. The city hall alley, what we're calling the city hall alley basically is the alley just here east of the building between Montezuma and Cortez Street. We're installing new driveway, driveways at both the Willis End and Sheldon Street, as well as widening the alley to accommodate two-way traffic from the Willis entry into the city hall parking lot. This will improve traffic flow and safety to the new facilities here. And over in Prescott Heights, we need to go out and make a correction to drainage improvements at a driveway on a project we did previously. Gentleman's house is below the street level. He had a berm that was in front of his driveway, and in the process of building the project, the berm didn't get replaced. So we're going to have to go in there and match it with the new asphalt and go down his driveway a bit to make this work. So it was an error on Public Works' part as part of the last project, but we're going to go remedy this now. The city's pavement maintenance program includes roadside concrete, driveway, sidewalks, things like that. It's all part of our bigger picture. Again, city is permitted by code to purchase services under another publicly bid contract. This project will use the cost competitive procurement process completed by the city of Glendale. Combs Construction Company entered into a contract with Glendale on December 13th of 2022 for one year, and the contract ends on December 13th of 2023. Staff received a final proposal from Combs Construction on March 1st of 2023, and Public Works is recommending award in a not to exceed amount of $762,389.2. The city's standard cooperative use contract will be used for the project, and funding for the project is budgeted in FY23 and available in the Streets Fund.
Mayor, bro, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, can you give me a better idea of the improved access to this facility on that alleyway? Like, what is that, what will that look like in terms of the impact? I don't expect you to graph it out.
Nope, nope. I've got to, I've got to exhibit.
Okay, perfect. Or wait, IT.
That's not it.
That looks terrific. It's a nice picture. That's a very wide open.
There we go. It's going to be difficult for me to see from this angle, but this kind of gives you, and I can send this to you via email. It's a PDF.
Does that help you?
A little bit. So as you see, we're going to widen the driveway entrance coming in off Willis to accommodate two-way traffic. It's going to involve removing some of the vegetation that's there in that island just to the south of the, of the entrance off the alley. Beyond that location, I'm going to, beyond that location, the alley will stay one way to Sheldon Street, and it would be a right turn out. There will be no right turn movement into the alley at that location. The proximity to Montezuma and that traffic light kind of prohibits us from doing that. That's just not a safe turning movement. So it'll allow two-way traffic from the entrance into the parking lot, in and out to the south to Willis Street, but maintain one-way access out onto Sheldon Street. So you can go out to Sheldon, make a right turn.
That's, that's great to know. I just, as someone who patiently waits to turn out of the facility right now on, in the parking lot, having an ability for another exit point would be nice. So I'm glad to see that that was considered.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Just super quick question. I hear frequently bids amount not to exceed, whatever it is. Is there ever a situation where the contractor gets the work done and says, wow, you know what, that actually cost us $5,000 less than we thought?
Even, I mean, all of our, even our bid construction contracts have contract contingencies or contract allowance built into them. All of these also have a contract allowance built into them as well.
Okay.
Typically, we try and keep it around 10%. So all these have that built into it. So that's where we say we're not going to exceed the dollar amount. It could very well come in under, under the final amount.
Great, good to know. Thank you.
So are we going to do a curb cut on Sheldon? Because right now it's kind of a rolled curb, and it's, you've got to drop down slowly, and usually cars coming up are coming up pretty, pretty fast.
Yes, sir. It'd be more of a standard driveway approach than the, I think, believe what's there now is more of a rolled curb type.
Right.
Which usually involves a little bit slower traffic movement.
And what's your experience with Combs?
Again, another contractor out of the valley we've used on several paving projects that have had a concrete component with it, and they've done very well for us.
Very good. I think widening that alley will provide much better vehicular usage. Cut down a little bit of our landscaping water use, too.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question about the city hall alley also. A member of the public contacted us and suggested that we keep the alley one way, and then when we widen it, we can have parking, just parallel parking all on, you know, one side. I don't know if that was looked into.
I can't say that we looked into it. We're really tied by the, by the right of way that's available there. And also, in the corner, I'm trying to see if there's something I can identify, but towards the right-hand side of the screen, right underneath the covering for the, for the bank drive-through, just above that in the thing is two fairly large APS cabinets.
Okay.
That are, they're the primary, it's a three-phase switching cabinet that feeds all the electrical that feeds this building. So to move that is, you know, it would not be, it would not be, and I don't think you'd gain enough room to make it worth it.
Okay, and then also I noticed that there's a dumpster in the middle of the alley on the Sheldon end is that, I assume that's the adjacent property owners.
That's the property owners. The power lines that run along the east side of that alley kind of prohibit the dumpsters from being pushed back.
Okay.
Because the operation of a commercial dumpster going overhead.
Right.
And that's why, that's why the decision, or, you know, we looked at it and decided that that would be best, keep that one way going out rather than trying to make two-way traffic there.
Okay, good. And then I assume we'll be working closely with the adjacent property owner on this project.
Meaning the city of Prescott?
The city of Prescott and on the east side of the block there.
We'll be talking to them about the dumpsters and stuff like that, but right now there's really not a good place for those dumpsters to go.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure we kept the adjacent property owner in, in the loop.
I just want to make sure that's who you were talking about and not.
Yeah, not us. We could keep ourselves in the loop, too.
I will do my best.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tenny, are you back up?
I do not believe so, Mayor.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, let's go to the west side of the parking lot. You know, I talked to Tyler a little bit about, I've got a large truck, and when I'm trying to turn in there, I'm turning right into somebody coming right out. And so is there any way we can somehow modify that so that, you know, it's not nearly as kamikaze as it is right now?
Gwen and I had this conversation just last week. The, right now, the only way we can widen the alley or widen that driveway is to the north. There's a catch basin right at the driveway approach on the south side. We did also look at, we've had the discussion, and I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, about possibly making a more permanent change to that driveway, maybe moving it closer to the building to the south. We can make it wider. Whatever parking spaces we would sacrifice there, we could add where the old driveway used to be. So we're looking at a couple of different options there. Like I said, where we're at now, the only way we can widen it is towards the intersection, and that may not be the best approach. But even if we could get four more feet, it might be better, it definitely would be better than what we have now. I think long-term, looking at the driveway approach closest, closer to the building would kind of center us, center us in the block a little bit away from both lights and probably provide a little bit of extra safety, and we can make it kind of maybe as wide as we need to.
Well, anything we can do to do that and then maintain parking spaces, I'm all for, because I ended up parking next to that gigantic yellow dumpster and kind of wedging my truck in between that and the next car. So it was interesting when I parked today.
Sounds like you're continuing to argue for a smaller truck for yourself.
Yeah. Either a skinnier truck, yeah.
Yeah, so the area I'm talking about is, there's a small box right above some trees there in the kind of lower part of the screen. I can't quite see what it reads from here, but about in that area was the area we'd look, would look at adding a driveway at that location to kind of line up with that drive aisle that's in front of the building.
And Mayor, if I could add a comment to this, I know Gwen and I talked about potentially adding some striping to that driveway so that we can keep vehicles exiting tighter onto their side to allow more vehicles to come in. So as a first step, try striping, and then we can look at, if needed, moving the driveway, which of course comes with a greater cost and time, so.
My compact car did just fine.
My midsize pickup does good.
I think it might be the driver. My truck has no problem.
Oh, that's, that's brutal.
At ease, everybody. All right, any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I got to flip through five screens to see what I'm.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-162.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Tim, you're going to want to hang on to that tie. That's a lucky one, buddy.
Passes 6-0.
All righty, now we're down to our last item. Item I.
We are. Approval of a notice of intent to change bulk water dispensing station rates and set public hearing on the same.
Lars.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Lars Johnson, Deputy Finance Director. This item on the agenda is to kick off a public process to consider increasing rates for a bulk water dispensing station. I have a very brief presentation for you, and then we'll be here for any questions you might have, public work. might have, Public Works as well as myself. All right, went the wrong way. So just a little bit of background on our, or information about the station itself. It's located at 535 Easy Street. There's two stations or two sides haulers can fill up at, one's for commercial, one's for residential. Currently, there's upgrades underway. At the January 26 council meeting, there was a new system for dispensing approved, so that is being planned to put into, put into operation. One of the biggest benefits of this new system is that it'll allow for precise amounts of fill-up, and it would have decreased the waste that's been happening. Also, right there, right now, it's, most residents, when they're filling up, use coins, quarters. So you can imagine that is inefficient for both the city to process those quarters as well as the, the customers at that location. All future, once this is in place, all transactions will happen through a web-based portal where customers can deposit onto an account, and they use a PIN number at the location to, to access their deposits, then pay for the water that way. The current rate that the city has established for this service is $5.27 per 1,000 gallons. That was in the last rate study with the late, the last increase in the rate study was January 1st of this year. With the needed improvements there, as well as the fact that this probably hasn't been studied as a standalone service before, at least not to the level that we did now, we thought we'd better move forward with a, a study to see what it really is costing or what could cost the city to provide this water. So we're proposing with this study that we did, increase to $14 per 1,000. After, I'll explain a little bit on the basis of how we came up with that, and then we'll show you how that compares to the market, because that's really what matters here. Haulers have choices to where to buy from, and we're one of them. So the, the way we form the cost is, we first looked at what, what's the cost of the overall production or system to bring the water to that station? There's two two-inch meters that will be installed there. So we looked at the non-residential two-inch meter rate, and based on the usage, that's in the second tier. So that gives us a certain cost of the water for that location. In addition to that, we then added in the additional dispensing equipment costs spread over that five-year period. Even though the study did cover five years, we're recommending council adopt this, would adopt a, an increase now, and then we'll relook at this when we do the overall rate study for the water utility. We also looked at, or we used a four-year average of the gallons that have been sold at that location to, to estimate then, of course, what the revenue will, will bring in at that location to cover the costs. And finally, before I show you kind of the next, the timeline of steps, how this compares in the market, right now, the city of Prescott is the least expensive out of all of this. The second is Chino Valley at $6.50 per 1,000, so increasing to 14 would put us, you know, pretty much in the middle of, of the market here. Some of these, of course, are farther away from us, but it's still, we exist in a, in a market of providing this service. Lastly, before I take any questions, is the timeline of, of what steps we're required to take by state law to then, to increase this fee. First, the action today is to allow us to post a notice of intent. It goes on our website first tomorrow, and then it'll set a public hearing date where you can take comments from the public before acting on this increase. We then have a couple of deadlines for publishing some information, the newspaper as well as the, the report that was provided. And then on May 23rd is what the motion is suggesting that you would hold the public hearing. And then we're, we're recommending the, the rate would be effective July 1st. That's a bit more than 30 days after adoption, but that just sets us on a clean fiscal year as well as a clean month to begin the race. With that, we'll take any questions.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question about the users. Is this water used for customers outside the Prescott city limits, or what, what happens to it after they load up?
Yeah, that, good question. These haulers, I believe, would be all outside of the city. They're residents coming to fill up their tanks to bring to their homes. But there's also commercial providers of bulk water, so they come and fill up their tanks, and then the residents pay these companies to deliver and fill up their tanks in their home.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, my request to speak is not recording for some reason.
I see you on my screen.
Oh, I don't have it up on mine. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman can tell me.
Thank you. Lars, a couple of questions on that. The two primary users of this bulk water would be the, obviously, the homeowner, but also there is the commercial component of the, because of the statute 310, where any construction project must have a water spray rig on the site for dust abatement. This is three times as much. Was there any thought process for at least the residential consumers to have it more in a stair-stepped? It's, it's just a big hit for them in such a short amount of time, and to be effective in July, because I know that we've got, you know, wells going dry out in Paulden and some other areas. For those people in particular, some of them I know are bringing water out of Phoenix with the big bulk haulers. Is that going to be a problem for them for three times as much in that area? And has there ever been a breakdown how much of that water is being used for commercial usage as opposed to the personal consumer?
First, I wanted to address, and maybe Public Works can jump in, but the, for construction use, there's construction hydrants, which is different. So this is potable water that's used for drinking and using in resident use mainly. I don't believe there's any construction companies filling their, you know, their watering for their sites there. In regards to the increase, the, you know, this is a cost of, the city has a cost of providing this water. So we look to set the rate to cover that cost as well as be competitive in the market. So that's kind of the approach we took.
May I continue real quick, though? So on that picture, there was the commercial side and the residential side. The commercial haulers are hauling the potable water to the end user. Would there be a possibility of changing the rate for that? I mean, it's, I don't know. Just, I'm just trying to think about these homeowners paying three times as much in a few months.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think the, the new system, as I understand it, allows for some tiered rates. I don't believe that we could set different rates for different sides of, for filling up.
Okay.
And it would probably be impractical in that someone would choose just to go the other side and get cheaper. But there is some tiered rate options. We elected not to recommend that in this study. It does make it pretty complex to individuals to calculate and administer.
I understand there's a need to raise the pricing, obviously. Just soften it maybe slightly. Thank you.
Mark, Mark has a comment here.
I mean, keep in mind that the old rate is five cents for 10 gallons of water. So it was extremely low, and even using the quarter system, it would automatically generate 47 gallons of delivery. So if somebody wanted 30 gallons in their container, they'd put the quarter in, and the rest of it would just flow down the street.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of waste involved, and I think it's a high time that we brought this into a more efficient delivery system at a reasonable, still a reasonable cost.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council, Mark Woodville, Finance Director. Just wanted to clarify that, you know, the tiered rate doesn't really work. Again, we're a water utility. We follow the water utility process for setting these rates. We're used to being a water utility. In my mind, this isn't really a water utility. This is an option. You know, this is, they can buy their water at any of these places. It's not a requirement. If they don't like the fact that we are now charging $14, they can drive to Chino and get it for six. Not to be cold-hearted, but we need to cover the cost of these upgrades to the system, and also, and again, everybody deserves water to some extent, but these are generally not cities, citizens. These are outside city, and the, the whole outside city rate, the 30% amount that we add on, was added on to the cost of water because it relates to a lack of ownership interest in the utility. So, and again, not to say that we shouldn't be concerned about our citizens, but again, not, not our citizens, but also they have options. This isn't a utility that comes to your house where you have no option to use it.
Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
I appreciate that additional information, Lars, excellent, and Mark as well. It, it looks like we've been undercharging for, for quite some time on this, operating this loss and effectively subsidizing people who've been coming to get water from us who are primarily, it sounds like, non-residents, and I think that's untenable. So going forward, I, I share, Councilwoman can tell me she's concerned that we're almost tripling the, the rate here. It, it's probably something, the reason is because these people have been getting a break for years and years and years, and so they can maybe imagine in their mind that they paid a little more two years ago, a little more five years ago, whatever, if they want, but we, we should not have anything, I think, that's, that's fee-based, that we are subsidizing to such a great extent for primarily non-residents. If, if our golf course was used by almost exclusively non-residents, I'd feel the same way about the golf course, et cetera.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question, maybe this is more for Gwen, but do we know how many acre-feet per year that we're supplying for this, and should we be including this number in our water budget?
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Gwen Roche, Deputy Public Works Director. I believe we use approximately seven acre-feet a year at the station. That's a recollection off the top of my head. We do not budget for that necessarily, but it obviously, it's included in our, our annual reporting as water used, water pumped as part of our annual report. But we do not set aside, the council has not made a determination to do that at this point.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
You know, Gwen, I had a question. If we're supplying Chino Valley with their commercial core for water, isn't that where their dispensing station is?
I believe, Mayor, I believe their dispensing station is located up off Road 3 North, which is quite a bit.
So that's really outside their commercial core.
It's, it is. It's, I believe it's located at 3 North and near 1 West. So it's quite a bit away from the commercial corridor where we agreed to serve water, and we currently have two customers as part of that IGA.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, just to, I have data on the actual usage there, if you'd like to hear the acre foot that I've calculated is about 15.25.
Per year?
Of what has been sold on average over the last four years. So that's close to 5 million gallons.
About half of that flows down the street, it sounds like.
So 15.
About seven actually used.
Could be.
15.45 acre-feet a year.
Yes.
Oh, that's a pretty good number. Okay, well, thank you. It sounds like we need to maybe get this on the agenda for our water issue subcommittee meeting and talk about it further.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I kind of did a little figure in here, and Kathy and I use about 2,500 gallons a month on average. And if you, if at $5.27 times basically two and a half, that's $13.18. That's a lot less than I pay for water. So I think that we needed a little bump up there.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also, I, I would, while we were meeting here, I, I looked at some of the commercial providers, and I think not only are we subsidizing people who live outside of the city to get cheap water, but we're subsidizing some pretty healthy profits to commercial providers of water as well, which, again, everyone has a right to make a buck and make a, make a living and do so well, but by my guess, they're doing quite well based on what they're charging for a monthly delivery service for 2,000 gallons of water. So just want to make that point.
Councilmember Rusing.
Well, I just want to make, make it clear that, you know, we don't have to provide this service, but we do it. It's not a, something that we are forced to do or anything, but we do it as a service to the community, and that's what I want to emphasize.
Councilman Shishka, did you have another comment?
No, sir, I forgot to press my button.
Well, we're getting better, but we're not perfect.
Are we any, any other questions or concerns? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I approve, I move to approve notice of intent to increase bulk water dispensing rates and set a public hearing on the proposed rate for May 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Did someone design this to be like really, really difficult?
Passes six zero.
Getting used to it.
This takes getting used to it.
Well, that concludes our regular agenda, and even though there's not too many members of the public remaining in the, here other than Elliot, which we appreciate, I think I thought it would be appropriate, since we're now in this new council chamber, that I think is much more welcoming, and hopefully we'll have members of the public more participating and monitoring the activities of the council. So I'm going to read the, one of my favorite quotes from Thomas Jefferson. "We in America do not have a government by the majority. We have a government by the majority who participate. All tyranny needs to gain a foothold is for people of good conscience to remain silent." So let's hope this encourages more people to participate, more people to get involved, more people to transparently offer their questions and concerns to our elected officials so we can make better decisions.
What?
Didn't do anything.
This meeting is adjourned.